Madam Chair, I'd recommend we leave this record open for public comment for 10 days.
There's no public comment?
This is not a public comment?
This is a... Right now, the law just looks for public comment with reference to developments in Tier 3. This one's in a Tier 4. So therefore, we are following the regular rules, which are, at this point, the Planning Commission would either move to approve or to approve the preliminary plan. I believe there was an earlier suggestion, and I believe Mr. Lesnar agreed to add a note to the plan that may be something that you would wish to do.
Thank you, Counsel.
So would you.
All right, Madam Chairperson, I would move that the Planning Commission approve the preliminary subdivision plan entitled "Washington's Discovery XPN Number 14-0006", and the Planning Commission find there are adequate public facilities to support the project, and that the Planning Commission adopt the findings and recommendations incorporated in the staff report, which is dated August 8, 2016. An addendum to the recommendation was added for rain barrels, I believe. So I would also append it to the staff's recommendation to include in the Homeowners' Association bylaws that the requirement for use of rain barrels be included.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded that this preliminary plan be approved. Are you ready for the question?
I would like to discuss it before we vote, if that's possible.
Yes.
For the record, I do not think... I cannot vote in favor of this proposal because I do not believe that the applicant has satisfactorily demonstrated that this meets all of the criteria for superior design. First and foremost, I do not believe you can, in my judgment, that a property that is 30 percent conventional already can be superior to that... can be superior design to conventional because 30 percent of it is already conventional design. Secondly, when you go through the list of design criteria and you document it with the superior design benchmarks that the staff has come out with dated September of 2015, the design criteria 1, open space exceeds the amount required by 1.39 acres, or 2.1 percent, which is minimal. And I would add that the fact that the applicant has chosen to do this as a mixed conventional and cluster, the open space is considerably less... considerably less than what would be expected for convention... for cluster subdivision.
Is... You finished?
No, I'm sorry. I thought... Number 1A? I'm sorry. The findings say that... I'm sorry. Lorenzi Dodd and Gannell's findings say nearly all the sensitive environmental features have been permanently protected with forest conservation easements, and I am concerned about the buffers and parcels B and D that will be violated, the DNR-recommended buffers. The forest conservation... superior design criteria 2, the forest conservation designs exceeds the county critical area. And if you look at the benchmarks, these forest conservation easements exceed by 6 percent, and the benchmarks recommend exceeds requirements by 10 percent or greater. The proposed facility includes shared pedestrians and bicycle facilities, and we've got a bike rack provided. But there is no shared... we're not encouraging the use of transportation, walking and bicycling transportation in lieu of driving or taking away from driving. We have panhandle lots. We have to also approve that especially because they exceed what is allowed in the code. And while I understand the justification, I don't think it demonstrates superior design. We've dealt with the rain barrels. That's great. And then the last two conditions, loop roads are provided with a development and a limiting of cul-de-sacs. Now, the applicant is saying that those aren't applicable, and I understand there might be reasons for saying that this is... they're not doing it because it's more impervious surface, but it doesn't make them not applicable. The idea for cluster design... one of the criteria for cluster design, and the idea for creating a cluster design, is to create a sense of neighborhood. Again, quoting from the benchmark guidance, "The goal is to have projects that have a neighborhood street network and not just an entrance with cul-de-sacs. Streets that connect build a stronger sense of community, enable greater community for automobiles and pedestrians."
Ms. Shertler?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I might. We brought up these issues for discussion. I didn't know whether or not you wanted to get some input from other of your colleagues. I don't know if any of them may wish to propose perhaps an addition... some addition to a comment, since these are the issues that you're raising, but I just want to make sure it is that everybody got a chance to respond to the issues, the important issues that you're bringing to the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, and there were no other comments.
Okay. None in response to Ms. Shertler?
Well, we're in discussion now.
So we're just in discussion now, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody got that opportunity.
Yeah, I was just... I was finishing up with, I don't believe that the client... the applicant has shown that this is superior design.
All right.
I do have one question. For the panhandle lots, do we have to approve that for the preliminary plan?
As part of that design, yes.
As for... as part of the preliminary subdivision plan.
I think, Mr. Lesnar, this is the time for the board's discussion.
Nancy, had you completed your...
Yes, yes, I think I have.
Any further discussion?
I think Mr. Farnes has a question for...
Yeah, he'll have a question on the floor.
So there's a motion?
So, yes, you are approving the design concept as presented.
I'm sorry, sir?
You're approving the design as presented.
Okay.
The panhandle lots?
And that doesn't have to be a separate approval for the panhandle lot?
No.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, are you ready for...
If I could, I was just approached by Mr. Lesnar, who's wishing to request that this be withdrawn, or at least deferred.
I call the question.
I withdraw my second.
No, I just called the question.
So there's a motion on the floor. They've already been... seconded. We already moved to the motion.
Right.
We'd have to take the vote.
Do we have to vote on calling the question first?
We have to vote on calling the question first.
Yes. Give it a second.
I'm sorry, you seconded?
Okay. All that had to be known by you individually, Mr. Farnes.
Can we just make sure that we're sure what we're voting on, okay?
Okay. So the request now is to call the question to move forward with the vote. I just... prior to calling the question, Mr. Lesnar approached and asked whether or not we could defer it. I don't know. I can only surmise that any of the issues that may have been brought about are issues that he may wish to address. I'm just throwing that out there. At this point, there's...
Okay, so they're not voting on the project right now. You're voting...
Just to call the question.
To call the question. Okay, thank you.
And who moved it?
Ms. Scherrard seconded.
And you ended?
Seconded.
So we're now voting on...
Whether or not to close discussion and take it to a vote.
Okay.
So it's just the... you're not voting on this, you're voting on whether or not to stop discussion and whether or not we go ahead and vote.
Yes. We, all in favor of stopping discussion and moving forward with the vote, let it be known by...
Would you like Ms. Pickrell to do a roll call?
Yes.
Robin Barnes?
Opposed.
Opposed to closing.
Opposed to closing.
Okay. Rosemond Daye?
Four.
Wayne McGoon?
Opposed.
You're last. Angela Sharar?
Four.
And Nancy Shertler?
Four.
And I'm last. Opposed.
You're opposed, okay.
I would now like to withdraw my second.
Okay, so we have three opposed and three for.
That motion does not carry?
Right, it don't carry. He's going to withdraw his original motion of approval.
Do we have to vote on that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do we... You don't have to vote on that.
I understand if...
All right, you don't have to bring a vote.
To withdraw the support for the motion. That's like the person wishing to go ahead and withdraw the motion, saying I'm withdrawing the motion.
Okay, okay. I just want to be sure.
So there's no motion on the floor at this time?
No.
Well, he withdrew a second. I'll just withdraw the motion.
Okay.
So then that should make it done.
So you're back to where you started?
Correct.
Is there any other...
I'd like to move that we defer this for perhaps corrections from the applicant.
Do I hear a second?
Well, do we know that there are...
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
It's defer, they want to withdraw it, correct?
What they want to do is withdraw it, or, I'm sorry, defer. And what's before the Planning Commission right now is the applicant's request. Basically, he's asking to defer any decision on his request.
And I just move that we do that deferral.
So a second? Yes.
Speak into the microphone, please.
So what is a deferral, then? I can... I understand the draw...
It delays your decision to another meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
And quite frankly, if I might...
I don't see any reason why not.
If I might, I mean, just as a matter of administration, if Mr. Lesnar or perhaps the attorney had gone ahead and submitted a request to defer any action on it prior to this time, typically, it simply would have been rescheduled for another agenda.
Just a second, are we in discussion, then?
Yes.
Of course, discussion. I don't under... I don't see any reason why not to, so if any of the other board members have a... I definitely would love to understand what the issue would be. I clearly suspect that there's some corrections that are going to be considered. There were issues brought up by some of our members, and I think perhaps that the applicant wants to address those prior to bringing this to a decision.
Is there a statute on how long this is going to be deferred, or I know...
No, personally, as far as I can tell, if an applicant wishes not to bring something forward and knows that he needs to have approval by a certain period of time, it's really at their own risk.
I do suspect they're going to want to come back very quickly because they want this approval before October 16th.
Yeah, I just am not sure why, when we have a quorum, why we wouldn't...
I agree.
Wouldn't go forward with it.
Why would you not do what you...
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, we have a quorum. I'm not sure why we would not go forward with it. I mean, it would be one thing to withdraw an application before we spent the evening talking about it, as opposed to looking up and counting.
But I think you also... you brought up some valid points that he may want to address.
And they would have to be completed by October. We'd have to have them back in time before October 16th.
Right, you'd have to be able to...
And it has to be put on the agenda before that time. We're already in August.
You gave him the suggestions.
I know, I didn't give him suggestions. I was saying that I didn't think that the development met the requirements.
You showed him your opposition, and I think he wants to address that opposition.
Putting words in his mouth.
Let him talk.
I mean, this is a work session, so it's unfortunate it's not a public hearing or an opportunity for the applicant to come and really speak on behalf of this project.
Well, we let him talk earlier. We can let him talk for himself now. Mr. Lesnar?
There is no motion on the floor, so actually, if the commissioners wish to hear from him, he can, if you want to hear his request directly from him.
Well, he's already requested to defer, so I'm sure he wants... he doesn't want, I don't know, to say anything else at this point would...
We could give him that opportunity if he wants to.
He asked for it.
Mr. Lesnar, would you like...
He asked for it to be deferred.
Say anything further.
That's not a motion.
I would gladly say a few things to try to answer some questions.
Why don't you come forward?
Well, we need to have a motion on the floor if we're following procedure. Yeah, during... while we had the motion on the floor, it would not have been in order for him to actually address any of them.
Is there a motion on the floor?
We can't bring him in as part of discussion. You got a motion and a second. Why can't we bring him in as part of discussion?
There was not a motion and a second to have Mr. Lesnar come back and speak.
No, there was a motion and a second to defer it, and that's... he's got some input on that.
Why?
And Nancy was requesting. Why? Were you not requesting? Why defer?
Oh, no, now my question is...
What are we doing?
What the heck are we doing?
I think the real issue here is whether or not we wish to have this matter deferred. I believe that what Mr. Lesnar would like to do is simply say whether or not he would like to have this matter deferred.
Oh, whether you'd have... Go forward.
Is that a yes?
Would you like to have this matter deferred?
I would like to defer the matter. I would like to bring it back soon. I think there's only two meetings in September. I don't even know if there's another meeting this month or not, but there's only two meetings in September, so in two to four weeks, I'd like to be back before you. And I, you know, Ms. Shertler certainly brought up some issues, and given the opportunity, I think I could explain those. They... most of those weren't issues that were brought before me when I was sitting here, so...
Mr. Ball, can you have this back on the agenda within the time?
Yes.
That they need?
Yes, we could.
He's saying he can have it back on the agenda, so...
So then... I'm sorry, Ms. Deavold, so then my question is, it's going to be another work session, or it's going to be this... when the applicant is going to come back? I mean, are we going to do this back and forth? Because it's either a work session here, or it is... It's not a work session. Okay, so there's a presentation of the preliminary plan. The staff goes ahead and gives its report. You're giving the applicant an opportunity to go ahead and present and answer some questions. That's what it is that I believe the Planning Commission had already done. There was a motion that was made to try to go ahead and say approval. There was a lot of discussion. There were some issues that were raised. The question then became whether or not he could go ahead and defer the project moving forward. As I'm understanding, it's the motion that's being made to go ahead and defer it. He's actually gone ahead and asked directly if the Planning Commission could defer it. And up until this point, we were all surmising what he might want to do. He's already said he would like to go ahead and have an opportunity to come back before the Planning Commission in a short period of time to address any of the concerns that may have been raised in discussion after the period of time when he would have had an opportunity to really engage with the commission. Because I think the big issue is that when there were issues raised in discussion, there was an open motion on the floor, and for him to have gone ahead and tried to interject into that, that would have been potentially out of order. So essentially, what we're doing is, at this point, the question is, he's asking the Planning Commission, can this please be deferred to come back to another day?
All right.
And my question is, to what effect is... are there going to be substantial changes to the plan that we've been voting on? Is that what the deferral is for? Or is it to get an uneven number of Supreme Court justices?
Mm-hmm, exactly. That's my concern.
Well, I would say that. I second the motion because things were brought up that, in the discussion period, that were not addressed to staff or him, and I don't see a reason why, if those are, you know, materials, you know, issues, we don't get additional information on them. So I'd like to defer it and have additional information on them because some of the things you brought up, I hadn't... several of them I hadn't thought of. I'd like to have more information on them, so...
No, and it's really... the question is, would Mr. Lesnar come back with the same information, or would there be adjustments in the preliminary plan that staff would have to review again? That's... because I wasn't making... I wasn't asking questions. I was pointing out...
Explaining why she...
Explaining your position, and I'd love to have more information, either refuting or supporting that position. They sounded like, you know, some of them I agreed with, and I'd like to have more information. So if I have an opportunity to do that, I think this is a meaningful way to get there.
But wouldn't that be another work session, though?
It would be another presentation.
Presentation.
So we would start back to the drawing board.
Because it very may well be the case that, given some of the comments, the staff would go ahead and potentially beef up a condition, and the condition may be... I mean, actually, the condition that you raised with reference to the... including a comment for the HOA, and that was something that they were willing to go ahead and do. So to the extent that any of the other comments are things that they may be willing to go ahead and add as additional conditions to the plan to address some of the concerns may, in fact, and like I said, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a developer or anything like that, but I just... they were willing to do that on one issue, don't know.
Okay. And then that may trigger another staff report. Is that correct?
It's going to trigger another staff report.
It would have to, I would say.
Staff doesn't want to hear me say that, but yeah.
Mrs. Lesnar has asked to defer the project, Washington's Discovery, and I think we need to accommodate his request.
I just have one more question, if I may. To Mr. Ball, then, my question would be about the grandfathering clause. Where does that fit in if this cannot be accommodated, or we're obviously spending a lot of time here that perhaps some of the agenda items would have to be postponed till next time?
Well, we'll put it back on your... ensure it comes back to you in time to meet the deadline, if that's your desire.
And I have this feeling that Mr. Lesnar will be at your door, Mr. Ball.
If they don't... if they don't... we'll give them deadlines. If they don't make it, then they won't be...
If they don't make it.
But it's up to you. There's... I think you have a motion and a second on the floor.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor of accepting Mr. Lesnar's request for deferral? Let it be known by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call?
Huh?
Ms. Pickrell?
Roll call. Nancy Shertler?
Opposed.
Angela Sharar?
Opposed with comment. I think that we have a quorum here, and we could have accomplished this tonight. The presentation was made, there were inadequacies, and I think that we should have accepted that.
Rosemond Daye?
Opposed.
Wayne McGoon?
Four.
Robin Barnes?
Four with comment. I think that it's, in fairness, information was presented. I, as a board member, would like to have additional information. I think this is... we're out to do that, so I am for.
And Joan Jones?
For what?
Again, we're tied.
We're going to pass this matter at this point and allow DNR's presentation to go forward.
Before we do that, should there be a motion on the board to not move this project any further for the record?
Say that again.
I think the board needs to vote to deny the project. If you're not willing to defer it and you're not willing to approve it, so there's a clear record of your action. And if you tie on that vote, it fails, and the project is denied.
If we tie on the vote to deny?
It fails, right.
That's my understanding.
It does not move forward.
It does not move forward.
It does not move forward to approval. I don't think that constitutes denial.
Okay, well, I'll defer it to our legal counsel, but I still think you should do it for the record.
So what happens to it if it doesn't?
So there's a clear... the record reflects your... the situation. That would be my advice.
My thinking is that it just simply cannot move forward on today's agenda. It will have to be presented on another agenda. He's not withdrawing his application.
I'm sorry, I came here...
He's not with... I'm sorry, he's not withdrawing an application. If you decline to take any action on it, there's no action on it, and the matter continues as an active matter where an applicant still wants to proceed. It's not proceeding tonight. It will have to proceed to another evening.
So then we didn't even have to take a vote?
Not really. I mean, you're going to... you've got a vote that says go, and you've got a vote that says don't go, and they're both tied. Well, we haven't made the other one yet, but that's probably the assumption, so it moves forward.
Or it doesn't move forward.
Well, it doesn't move forward. You don't have to come back to the board. That's why we have an odd number of members.
But it has to come back.
Right now, we don't. We didn't get a majority vote, so I don't know how you could have a decision either way.
You can't, which is, until... until there is something dispositive, the applicant's application is still active and pending and has to be addressed.
Isn't a vote to approve that fails essentially a denial?
Yeah. That's what I thought.
There is no...
That's the thing.
Isn't a vote to deny that fails approval?
No.
It doesn't move forward.
I don't think it works either way.
I agree with Mr. Ball. It just... it doesn't move forward.
It doesn't move forward. Not at this session.
So, Ms. Deavold, will you repeat your instruction to us?
She's saying...
That this will go forward to another session.
This is going to end up going to another session. Did I already hear a motion to disapprove?
No, I thought... Okay, then I'm confused.
I already heard a motion to deny it, right?
No, we... I mean, I thought the motion... if the motion to approve doesn't pass, I thought that meant it's denied. Now, are we saying we have to have a motion?
No, it just does not move... it does not move forward as an approved preliminary plan.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. And since the applicant hasn't withdrawn...
If I may interject, I mean, this project has been under review for two-plus years. We've put a lot of time and a lot of treasure and a lot of effort, not just Lorenzi Dodd and Gannell, but staff, hours and hours and hours, not just local, but state also. There's a lot of people that have had a lot of effort that have gone into this, and, you know, I'm not asking for a vote tonight, I'm just asking for a deferral. You obviously brought up some very, I'll say, legitimate questions, and given the opportunity, I think I would like to respond to those. I think we can do this in a very timely manner, bring it back to you in two to four weeks, whatever staff can accommodate. I think I can do it where I don't even change the plan. I think I can respond to you in writing, so you can see my response. If some of your things, some of your items, require a plan change, or a note, or a condition, we can make them a condition. We do it all the time. You do it week after... you know, month after month at all your planning commission meetings. All your plans have conditions. We can easily do that, just like the rain barrels that were brought up. That would be a condition that I would either... you know, you would make that a condition on your approval letter. So I think a lot of the issues that you brought up, or other folks brought up, I think we can do that in a very timely manner. Doesn't even necessarily need to have staffs review. They can certainly put their input in on the staff report to concur or not concur, but I think they... I think staff has done a great job in putting this together, but I just think it would... in all fairness, I'm respectfully asking that we be allowed to come back in, you know, two to four weeks to address the concerns.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Deavold, you said that can be done, and you can get it on the agenda.
Well, you know, we'll discuss it with our legal counsel after the meeting, make sure we're all in the same position to move it back, or not.
So if we're voting that it doesn't move forward tonight, it still basically will move at another session.
Yes.
I mean, it's basically the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
It's the exact same thing.
The vote was moot, yeah.
It's just that we can't reach any conclusion tonight, but it will move forward at a later date.
And my concern is, as you, as Mr. Lesnar said, there's been a lot of time spent on this plan, and I don't, I'm not sure why we shouldn't finish it, and because I believe most of my concerns are pretty, cannot be fixed with a condition.
All right, we still have quite a bit on the agenda. Can we move forward, and we'll have more discussion on this at another time?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lesnar.
Thank you.
We now.